It is 5:31 PM on March, February 14th, 2022, and I'd like to call this work session to order. The first thing on our agenda is, oh, I'm so sorry, it's not February anymore, it's March, it's March 14th, 2022. Thank you, Councilor Mastry. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. The first thing on our agenda is going to be an economic dashboard update by Dr. Tatiana Bailey. And to kind of queue her up and introduce her, we have Counselor Flores.
Thank you, Chairman Martinez. I wanted to take this opportunity to just maybe tee up why we're at this stage on this economic dashboard, especially for the four new council members. But back in February of last year, we held a retreat. And one of the things that I thought Pueblo needed was an economic dashboard that really looked at a lot of, a lot of areas that could help us increase our economic development. And I wanted this opportunity not only to welcome Dr. Bailey, but also introduce Abel Chavis, who's sitting out here in the audience. He and I have been kind of conspiring for the last 12 months and helping, helping me put this whole thing together. But thank you, Abel, for your help. And it's, it's not over yet. But anyway, I would like all of you to know that this is something that was put in our budget. And so currently through the legal department, we are working and working out a a contract between the city and Petco so that they will kind of take over the management of this dashboard going forward. We felt that that's probably the right place for it. And it's kind of a work in progress, but I think that we're pretty close in putting out our first economic dashboard. And I'll stop there, but I'd like to introduce Dr. Tatiana Bailey. She is an economist and she is the lady that we'll be contracting with to move us forward over the next couple of years. And welcome, Dr. Bailey, and I'll turn it over to you.
Well, good evening. Thank you, Dennis. I appreciate that. And nice that Abel is there as well. Yeah, so thank you for having me. And I appreciate being first on, on the agenda. I think the best thing for me to do is actually just to share my screen. And in some ways, this is even better than being there in person. It is a lot of information. I don't think that you'll necessarily be able to absorb it all at once. There are some data pieces that are still missing. For instance, you know, there are some local specific things that, for instance, I was able to get for Colorado Springs. Once I moved here and I had some relationships that I knew who to ask. And really, Dennis and Abel have been my points of contact because some of the metrics that we'll be tracking are national, some are state, and then, of course, some are local. And then there are some things that are, a lot of things actually, that are available from government sources, either the Bureau of Labor Statistics, Bureau of Economic Analysis, State Demographers Office, Department of Local Affairs of Colorado. You know, and that's all the boring stuff, right, that the economists do and know about. And there's kind of a lot of data digging. But there are still a few missing pieces, but we're getting there. And I have to give Dennis and Abel, particularly Dennis, a lot of credit in, in the last few weeks. So I'm, I'm just going to kind of jump in and let you know, you know, what the data is generally saying. And what I'm thinking, and this will clearly be up to all of you, is if you would like me to attend a future meeting, once this dashboard is 100% complete, to, you know, really talk through it a little bit more slowly and carefully and answer any other questions, we can do that. Because I know that when I first started presenting this to Colorado Springs, there were a lot of answers. Nobody had really compiled the data this way. But it was good. It was good that there were a lot of questions and clarifications. And as Dennis and Abel know, it's a tool that's used by the mayor's office, the county commissioners, city council, and a lot, a lot of businesses. So I feel like it's, it's good fruit, if you will. All right, so let me get over to screen share. All right, and can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay. So the dashboard, just as a quick summary, when I moved to Colorado seven and a half years ago, the, the economic forum that was started by a professor and a community member in Colorado Springs, they didn't have a dashboard. What they had was one annual event, kind of mimicking the CU Boulder one, and one annual report. And that report is about 35 to 40 pages, good, rich information, but there are two problems with that. Number one, not too many people read 40-page reports, except for maybe economists and a few select people, especially today. And number two, by the time you're publishing annual data, because annual data lags, often the data that was in the booklet, as they called it, was a year or two old. And I know as an economist, you know, a lot of these metrics come out on a monthly or quarterly basis. And for a community that's really eager to track their economic development, something more timely would be good. So I developed this dashboard, made it two pages, front and back. It's all graphs and a couple of tables. And I picked out the things that I think are the most important for any community to track. You can't track everything. And we did end up honing a little bit here and there, but by and large, what, what you see is what we ended up going with. And I have to say, it's, I think people prefer two pages. Let's just say that. So each section has a different colored background to sort of delineate it. So the first one, I call the big picture. And that one is mostly national statistics. So for instance, here we have quarterly GDP. And this is inflation adjusted. I have the two measures by quarter. So the first one is year over year, and that's, you know, your little footnotes down here with the little asterisks will, you know, explain these things when you look at it, you know, with more time. And then the second one is the annualized one. So if, you know, quarter four were annualized over the year, the growth rate in Q for, for that Q4 to Q4 of 2023 would be 7%. I tend to focus on the first one. I like comparing to the, to the prior quarter. You know, no great surprise here, we had a very severe, but very short recession with a nice rebound here. And now GDP is coming back down. That's, that's a whole other story. Another one I track is consumer sentiment. That's really important. That's about two-thirds of the, the US economy, which of course, we all belong to the US economy. And I've actually been writing a lot recently about this fall and consumer sentiment. Of course, that's mostly inflation related.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes?
Would you please mind zooming in on that page there really quickly? So that way we can
Be a little better?
Yes, please.
Is that good enough? Is that better?
That's, yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, yeah, I apologize. I don't, I don't know what your screen looks like. So anyway, GDP, consumer sentiment. And then this is where I have GMP, which is Gross Metropolitan Product. It's the same as GDP, but for metropolitan areas, right, for cities. And for Colorado in 2020, this data is just annual, and this just came out a few weeks ago. The fall in 2020, the state was about 3%. And here's where I start doing a little bit of comparison between Pueblo and other cities. So you can see, for instance, US on average, the average city declined 3.5%, but I also brought in some other comparison cities, Salt Lake City, Huntsville, blah, 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 and then Pueblo at negative 4.1%, okay? And please also note that in all of these, I have the sources and some clarifying notes often below each graph. Then over here, I have job openings, which, as we all know, are at record, record highs. This data does lag a little bit, so the latest available is January. And then in the box, I have civilian participation rate, which is something I talk a lot about in my presentations, is being low even before the pandemic. And of course, it's even worse now. Unemployment rates here, I use the not seasonally adjusted because that, that's the only way that the data is collected for counties. And, and because it's, I have regional data in here, this also lags a little bit. The January is going to be out shortly. But here you can see US, Colorado, El Paso County. I do keep El Paso County in here for, for you all for a point of reference. And then Pueblo County, unemployment rate. And of course, these are all color-coded as well. And then just, you know, because the US data is more timely, I do include it in this text box here, and I also include something called the U6 rate. Again, I'm not going to go into too much detail here because otherwise I probably will use up too much of your time. Then I have inflation measures down here with CPI. I have it for the month and for the year. So as we probably all know, for February, inflation is 7.9% in the US. And then I was able to find the cost of living index for Pueblo at 88.2% of the US. This is a different source than what I have for Colorado Springs. I couldn't find Pueblo. But, you know, again, I sourced it here. And then just for point of reference, and I could include this here, that's 88% of the US average, which is indexed at 100. I should probably include that in there. Okay, and then another, this next section is all about labor force unemployment. This is Pueblo MSA job openings. Abel in particular is really familiar with this and Dennis as well, because they know that I do a lot, a lot of workforce-related stuff. And this is from Burning Glass MZ. This is probably the best source that's available for the job openings. And you can specify any region you want. So of course, I pulled Pueblo MSA here, the top 10 job openings for February of 2022. I have the, the title, and this is according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics categories, categorizations that they use called ONET. Number of job openings for Pueblo in this given month. I have the market salary. Now, the reason I don't use the Pueblo salary is because according to Burning Glass, not too many employers list salaries. So in order to get a larger sample size, it's better to, to pull that data for the, all, all of the US. So that gives you some idea of, of what the average salary is for these positions. And then I include also the risk of automation, because I think it's important to think about the future of work. And I have the, the different categories down here. And then here in this text box, now this lags a little bit from, you know, in comparison to the February data up here, I have December. And that's because the Colorado Department of Labor and Employment, in order to get the total unemployed, it lags a little bit. But I do juxtapose that to the openings of December 2021 so that I can give you this ratio, which I think is a really important ratio, workers available per job opening. And for Pueblo, it's 1.16. By way of comparison, for Colorado Springs, it's 0.71. So we don't have enough workers for each available job. You have a slight excess of workers for available jobs, not significantly though. And then here, I have Pueblo County new jobs. And then these are net new or lost, right? Because if you go below zero, like we had in the Great Recession or during the pandemic, you're going to have a negative number. And this, this I track all the way back to 2001. Now, there's an additional calculation that I'm still doing right now that I do for Colorado Springs, where I add a little dotted line to say how many new jobs does Pueblo need in order to match its population growth? And that's something that I developed for Colorado Springs, but I vetted it with the State Demographers Office, just to make sure. I have some really great, fantastic contacts there, very helpful people. So I'm still working on that, and I will be adding that there. So it gives you some point of reference in terms of whether your region is meeting that threshold. I can tell you that in Colorado Springs, it didn't until 2014. 2014 was the first year that Colorado Springs met that threshold. Then the next page, which is really the back page, I continue with the screen section of local employment and wages. Honestly, I think this graph right here is one of the best in, in terms of understanding the composition of your employment regionally. So here you can see the top 12 sectors according to employment. Okay, so this is by employment. So for instance, healthcare and social assistance is, is like in the US, your largest employer. The next biggest one is retail trade. This green one is accommodation, food, and then you have education and so forth.
Hey, Dr. Bailey?
Yes?
Would you please mind increasing or zooming in again?
Sure. Okay. Hopefully, that's better.
Can we do one more?
Okay.
That's good. Thank you.
Hopefully, you were able to see what I was showing you before. Feel free to, feel free to interrupt me anytime. Okay, so here's, and this is QCEW data. So this is from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. It also lags a little bit. So the most recent is Q3 of 2021. But in my first couple of years in, in Colorado Springs, and going back and forth with the Bureau of Labor Statistics, there are a lot of revisions to employment data. And if you really want good data, it's better to just wait a little bit and be one or two quarters behind. So that's why I have this data. But I've trended it all the way back to 2015. So it's a pretty good indication of what sectors are growing and which are not. And you can see, for instance, you know, construction took a hit in 2020, right? Retail trade and so forth. And then this box right here, these are your top growing industries from a percentage perspective from 2015 to 2021, Q3 to Q3. So transportation and warehousing in Pueblo County is an example, grew almost 71%. Wholesale trade, almost 40%, professional and technical, 32%, and so forth. And again, I have everything, all of your sources here and notes. Now, this portion down here, this is another way to look at what your major sectors are. This is your contribution to gross metropolitan product, or basically your region's GDP. Okay, so the top one was by employment. This one is by dollars. Okay? So these are the sectors that contribute the most from a dollar perspective. And this is again, 2020, and it's real dollars. It's inflation adjusted. So the first one is government and government enterprises, and I have examples of that down here. That's everything from postal services to airports, utilities, and so forth. Finance and insurance, healthcare, manufacturing, business services, professional business services, and so forth. And in 2020, your total GDP or for your region, GMP, was almost 5.6 billion. Okay, that's the size of your economy. Now, over here in this open space, from, from my dashboard in Colorado Springs, that's where we had military information, right? Because we have a large military presence. I had two graphs for the number of people employed in, at the bases, and then the economic impact with some notes. This is an opportunity to add a couple of graphs or a couple of tables. And, you know, that's something that you all can decide. And, you know, I'm happy to also make some suggestions based upon that. Now, this section over here is the last part of this employment and wages. And I think this is really important, too. This is again, Q3 of 2021, and this is the average annual wages for all industries. And what I did is I juxtaposed US, Colorado, El Paso County, and Pueblo County. And as you can see, the average wage is lower in Pueblo County. And I put it up here in writing for you, Pueblo wages are 22% lower than the US, 26% lower than Colorado, and about 14% lower than El Paso County. Okay? And then your total employment in that quarter, in that quarter, Q3 of 2021, was almost 62,000. Okay? Now, I think it's also good to know what percentage of your population is at or below the federal poverty level. Well, here for 2019, the census data isn't out yet. And by the way, because of the problems with 2020 census, we might be stuck with this. Census is still trickling out things. And for some regions, they've said the sample size is, is too small, and they're not going to release it. So we'll be stuck with 2019. But it's trickling in. So obviously, if I see it, I'm going to update this. But the percentage for the US is about 12%. And for Pueblo County, it was almost 18%. Okay? And here I have the federal poverty level in 2019 was 12,490 for an individual and 25,750 for a family of four, clearly very, very low salaries. And then lastly, I like to use this thing called the MIT Living Wage Calculator. There are a few out there. This is probably the most respected one. It incorporates what is a living wage for a given region, and they have I think it's every single county in the United States. And they incorporate things like childcare and average rent, transportation, and so forth. So it's an approximation, but it's a pretty good one. So in 2020, I do have 2020 data from them. You can see that the minimum wage, you know, in Colorado is $12 if you, was $12 an hour. If you annualize that, it's about 25,000 a year. But what MIT says is the living wage for a household with one adult, so a single parent and two kids, that person would need to make 36, almost $37 an hour, or annualized to about 76,000. Okay? If you have a household with two adults and two children, but only one of those adults is working, then you, then that person needs to make $31 an hour and roughly 65,000. And the reason for that is typically you don't have childcare costs if you only have one person working. And then a household with two adults, two of them, both of them working, and two children, there you have those statistics, right? Each of those individuals would need to make about 42,000. Okay? So that's the back of the front page. Then the second page, different color, I have demographics. Okay? Here you have 2020, I was able to get 2020 data for Pueblo County, and I compared it to the US. So for instance, the median age in 2020 in Pueblo County was 40. You guys just made it over to 40. You were 39. something last year. And the US median age is 38, was 38.6 in 2020. But I think it's really helpful for a community to also see it broken down by age. So you can see that, for instance, Pueblo County has a little bit fewer children in terms of percentages. A little bit more of 18- to 24-year-olds, a little bit less of 13, sorry, 25 to 39. Same in this age cohort, about the same for ages 55 to 64, and then more senior citizens, 65-plus in Pueblo County. Okay? And then what about projections? Well, here I have Pueblo County population growth by age, according to the State Demographers Office, between now and 2040. And here you can see, for instance, children, you're not really projected to have growth. Okay, I mean, remember, we're now halfway down this, this, this X-axis of 2020. So declining a little bit more and then, you know, increasing ever so slightly. The next age cohort is the 18 to 24, and that's pretty much holding steady, declining a little bit. This is actually really interesting, increasing 25 to 49-year-olds. Okay? And again, this is State Demographers Office, and I know Elizabeth Garner very well. She's the director there. She does a fantastic job with her staff. So you know, you got some opportunity right here in these prime working ages. And then the 50 to 64, about pretty stagnant, a little bit of growth. And then you've got, just like the US, a lot of senior citizens. That's, that's pretty much the same rate of increase as the US, because I'm familiar with that graph. And then between now and 2050, here, this is just also from the State Demographers Office showing growth in each county and by color-coded. So if you look at Pueblo, you are projected to increase modestly in this 20 to 50,000 range right here, right? At least you're not blue. Those are the counties that are losing population. Okay? And then here are the actual numbers for the population estimates for both Colorado. Okay, Colorado almost at 5.8 million and projected to be at almost 7.6 million by 2050. And then Pueblo County being at 168,000, projected to get to almost 195,000 by 2050. Okay? Now, pay attention to the little notes, because here I have, I've also included for you, the city of Pueblo population in 2020, city, right, was almost 112,000. So most, you know, that's a lot of your population, right, of the county. Pueblo County is estimated to grow by 16% and the US by 31% by 2050. Okay, so about half the population growth rate. That's not good, because the population growth rate for the US is low, okay, between now and 2050. Then I jump over this, kind of fits into this section, but it's, you know, the graph kind of landed here. And this is cost of living. Okay? This is something called the Housing Opportunity Index. The source is Wells Fargo and the National Association of Home Builders. There are two or three sources out there. I like this one the best. And this Housing Opportunity Index can be translated as the percentage of people who make the median wage, who can afford the median-priced home. Okay? So for Pueblo, it's now at about 58%. But I, I went back and I looked at the 2012 data for you, and it used to be 91%. This is a very common theme across the United States, but it's a lot more acute in places like Colorado. I don't have to tell you that. Okay. Home sales. I've been working with Dennis. I need historic data. They provided me with the most recent data on sales, and I still wasn't 100% sure on those numbers, so I'm working with them. Tess Pickrell from Pueblo Association of Realtors is, is out, I think, until tomorrow or the next day. But I'm going to be working with her to create a trend graph for you, just to look at the number of sales. Okay? And I'm hoping that I can get, go back, you know, five, seven, eight years. This is the latest National Association of Realtors data on median existing single-family home price. And Q4 is out. You can see it for Colorado Springs, for Denver, and for the US. Okay? Pueblo is not collected by National Association of Realtors, unfortunately. It's not a big enough MSA. So in my notes here, I included Pueblo as the, the source is Realtor.com. I'm not thrilled about that, but as long as I consistently use that, I think it's okay. And I also have several Realtors who have told me that's not a bad source. And I also cross-checked it with some other sources, and they're all kind of within that range. So if I don't get something directly from Pueblo Association of Realtors, I'm going to stick with that. If I get something from them that I'm really happy with, then I'm going to put that in there. But you can see the percentage increases, and I will have that for Pueblo once I speak with Tess. And then I have the MSA ranking. National Association of Realtors ranks home price of 190 MSAs. Colorado Springs is at 30 now. It was like at 60 when I moved here. It's crazy. Pueblo, I estimated this. I took an MSA that was at almost exactly the same median price, and I stuck this in here, and I put that in the notes. Okay, Pueblo rankings estimated based on similar MSA city ranking by National Association of Realtors. And it looks like this got cut off. 190 MSAs are included, but I'll fix that. Building permits is the other thing that I'm working on, and Dennis is helping me to obtain. They have said that they can get me that information, but I need the historic. And I think I'm pretty confident that that one's going to come through quickly. Tourism. Um, this is the last page. Tourism, I also need to speak with Danielle Kitzman. She was able to get me total tourism spending. And this is quote, "direct travel spend." She actually gave me the link to the Colorado Tourism Office, and that's what I have in the sources down here. And this is for Pueblo County, and this is how much was spent in 2020. I need to get a little bit better understanding from her in terms of direct travel spend. Is, is that only people who are traveling here, or is that all tourism dollars and so forth? So that's still in process. And then she does not And then she does not have hotel occupancy information or RevPAR, which is their, the equivalent of like how much the hotels make. Um, I get that from a local source in Colorado Springs. And I'm not a hundred percent sure whether uh Danielle's gonna be able to get that. It's not something that she collects right now, but there's probably another metric or two related to tourism. That we will be able to track in here. And then the last section. The last section here are just what I call additional metrics. I just got the commercial real estate information on Friday. From CoStar, um luckily, they're able to get me that, uh, which is the same source that I use for Colorado Springs. And I'm gonna have the vacancy rates and the lease rates for office, medical office, retail and industrial, okay? And I'm gonna um trend that. They were able to give me some historic information. Um, I just didn't, didn't have the time to pull all of that together. Um, just yet. So that's coming and that's, that is good data. Tax receipts. This is um something I'm getting from uh the mayor's office from the uh from the city of Pueblo. And this is showing gross sales tax receipts. And then in the text box here, I also have uh the percentage increase year over year. So that would be. February of twenty one to February of twenty two. So you can see that there. I could add a trend line if you wanted me to. And then vehicle sales, I just kind of show as a, you know, a barometer of um buying. In the US, it's usually correlated to consumer sentiment. Um, and then I'm actually comparing to twenty nineteen in this, just because twenty twenty was such an off year for vehicle sales. And that's BEA Bureau of Economic Analysis in- information. And then here. Educational attainment, super, super uh important, important as well. Again, might get twenty twenty data, but twenty nineteen. You know, these things don't usually change a tremendous amount year to year anyway. But I have Pueblo County, Colorado and and uh US. And this is the um percentages of people who have some college or associate's degree. Um, and and then again, this is for Pueblo County. So you can see. That for ages eighteen to twenty four, Pueblo County is actually higher than Colorado in the US. And by the way, that's also true. In Colorado Springs. And if you stop and think about it, that does actually make sense, because has a lower percentage with a bachelor, completed bachelor's degree or higher, okay? So that, that's part of what you're seeing. Um, and then I have the same information, but for ages twenty five plus. And the reason that we have these two age cohorts is these are sort of your early completers, and then these are sort of your later completers, right? Um, or maybe not completers, um, but you know, have some, some uh level of completion for an associate's degree. And then I have the same metrics, but for a bachelor's degree or higher, right? So these would be, um, you know, people with also a master's PhD um or the undergraduate degree. And you can see it's, um, you know, combining these uh or. This is a subset of this one, right? So your total attainment level is gonna be the twenty three percent. And then lastly, I just have interest rates for anyone who's interested, um, and you know, most recent prime thirty year Fed funds rate, okay? Um, at the beginning, I always have at the bottom here. When it was updated, okay? And then what I've typically done in Colorado Springs is, you know, obviously updated this on a monthly basis and sent it. To the people who support um the forum. So, you know, the last page, if you wanted to have a last page, could be, you know. Supported by, and I think I put it in here at the very bottom. Um, you know, mayor's office, city council, uh, you know, whoever it may be, but those are all details that we can figure out later. And I think that's pretty much it. I'm open for questions.
Thank you for that, Dr. Bailey. Um, what questions or comments are there from council? Counselor Flores.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation that uh.
Really fast. Dr. Bailey, would you mind uh unsharing your screen, please? Thank you. Sorry, Councilor Flores.
You know, uh, I wanted to make two comments. The first one is that. We have a lot of economic data that we get in the city. In fact, uh, our university and US Bank. Have an annual public forum, but this is always looking back twelve months. There's always information about how we did the last twelve months. This particular dashboard is gonna be put out every month. And so it's going to be really current data. Uh, for people that are making decisions either to moving to Pueblo or opening up an additional. Location or that type of thing. But what I wanted you to talk about a little bit is how. Communities use this dashboard. To increase economic activity in the city, because now we, we're gonna have real time data. And uh, using Colorado Springs, I guess, is the nearest area to us, uh. How were they using this and how? Are opportunities created by the use of this very valuable information?
Yeah, I mean. This isn't an exhaustive answer, because honestly, it's a little hard for me to remember all of the different. Times that people have said, you know, I used it for this or I used it for that. Or sometimes, you know, people call me and say, hey, I'm writing a grant application. Um, and I just wanna make sure I'm understanding this correctly. Um, and you know, so. Wow, uh, grants to nonprofits, grants to the state, uh, you know, grant applications, uh, grants to the federal government. That would be one, you know, tranche, if you will. The chamber, um, and even the city really uh has often used the information to say. To a business that's in- interested in either moving to the region or maybe expanding in the region. Wh- what a commercial real estate. You know, what's, what's happening with commercial real estate? Um, so they can look at that data. Um, you know, sometimes they, okay, well. What are your top job openings? Um, I mean, there are. I, I would say probably the labor information is the thing that's used the most. Um, it's a little. It's something that I focus on a lot, but I think also the mayor, Mayor Suthers has used that information a tremendous amount. Um, the workforce center, uh, even though they have access to this data, I think they've been able to leverage it. A lot more, um, simply because there's a community awareness now of what those top job openings are. One of the more exciting things, um, I'm very good friends with Lance Bolton, who is the president of Pike's Peak Community College. And he really honed in on the um top job openings. And of course, you know, I, I, I. Have run longer reports for him like I have for Abel that show like the top openings, um, you know, the top thirty, let's say, openings. And not only do you have registered nurses and nursing assistants, but you have phlebotomists and you have radiologists and so forth. So he used that information to increase the number of slots, training slots at his institution and. One of my favorite things is that a lot of these um. Programs need clinicals, right? Uh, they need the students to, they get to a certain point after learning in the classroom. And then they have to actually go into a healthcare setting, right, and practice on real people. Well, some of that can be on um dummies. Some of that can be on in simulation labs. Um, so he built out a simulation training center on the, in the north side, not far from my house, um, for Colorado Springs. Uh, so that's pretty exciting, because that enables him to churn out more students, um, and they don't get sort of bottlenecked, if you will. Uh, waiting for those uh in-person uh training opportunities. Um, gosh, let me think. I'm gonna look at this and see what else comes to mind. Um, I know a lot of the nonprofits have used the poverty information. Uh, the living wage information. I've even had employers ask me about the living wage information when they were making choices. And of course, that's been more of an issue recently. Um. Uh, PPAR Pike's Peak Area Realtors, um, they use this information a lot. Um, they uh. They actually had me do an economic impact analysis kind of based on some of this uh information. And I recently. Uh, looked at not only what are the. I've always had, what are the ideal number of permits? Um, and that's gonna be included in your dashboard um as well, once I have the permit information. But also, what's the actual number of of units that we are short, whether it's multifamily or single family? And I recently did that analysis, um. You know, because we know we have a national housing shortage, and that's really helpful to, to the local builders, uh, to have a sense of, are they quote overbuilding? Um, I know that Steve Posey, um, at, at the mayor's office at the city, um, who works on housing affordability. Has used the Housing Affordability Index, the Housing Opportunity Index that I mentioned. Um, yeah, I mean, those are some of the major things.
Thank you.
Counselor Warner.
Hi, um, thanks for your presentation, and I, I've been for this from the beginning. I think this is gonna be very helpful for. Lots of us in the community. Um, I was wondering if you could get us some stats on, on women's pay. Um, it's my understanding that, that. Uh, across the nation, uh, women make about sixteen percent less than men. But I've also read that here in Pueblo, it's forty one percent less than men. And um, I, I would like some information on that, so that we could focus a little bit more there.
Yeah, I'm gonna take a note on that. That's actually, um, that's interesting, because I've done, um, actually quite a few presentations on the wage gap. And um, I've done it on national statistics. Hold on one second, I'm gonna grab my book here. Um, on national statistics, but I don't know a lot about local statistics. Um, so I can't promise it, but I can promise that I'll look into it. Because I think that would be interesting. If you had that on the dashboard, it makes it that much more. You know, evident in the community, right? Um, especially as this uh gets, you know, hopefully, um disseminated out to businesses.
Definitely, thanks.
Of course.
Uh, C- Counselor Attentio.
Yeah, I was especially interested in the uh unemployment rates for the city of Pueblo. Uh, my district is low to moderate, most of it is low, low to moderate income individuals. And I'm wondering what, uh, if your demographics, is there anywhere? Where it would show the unemployment rate for low to moderate income individuals? Uh, specifically Latino, and since I'm Latino and I represent a lot of low income Latino people. I go through uh a lot of the businesses in town. And noticed that the, the Latino population is usually the last to get hot fired, uh, last to get hired, the first to get fired. And uh, not to mention that uh, they get paid a lot less than uh. Other individuals. Is there any way that we can track that? Unemployment rate for low income people?
Um, I'm also a Latina, so I, I, I like your question, um, and I think it's a really relevant one. Uh, that is also something. That I'll have to look into. Unlike the wage gap by region, that one I'm not as confident about, to be honest, but I'm still gonna take a look at it, um, for sure. But I'm pretty sure that the unemployment rates um are available. Um, probably more historic information from the census data, because census is the one that often breaks things down by racial ethnic minority groups. Um, so you know, we might have slightly dated information, but that's okay. If the table says it's twenty nineteen, people know it's twenty nineteen. But it'll still show the disparities. Um, so let me take a look at that as well, because.
If we knew that information, we might be able to deal with that population a little bit better and. And find some solutions to the problems that are in uh the lower income parts of town. And especially with the uh minority populations.
You know, you're making me think that. Maybe I'm going back to the dashboard. Do you remember that I had that section that was military? That is quote open space? It's gonna take a little bit of reshuffling, but maybe one thing um would be to not only have those unemployment rates by racial ethnic group, if, if I, I can indeed get that. But also educational attainment. Because that's where it all starts, right?
Yeah.
Um, so let me, let me look into both of those, and if I can find them, I'm gonna plop them in here, because I. I think you're right. I mean, your population is, is, is a little different. Um, you know, we have a. Relatively large Latino population in southeast Colorado Springs, but it's not nearly the percentage, percentages that you have in Pueblo. So let me see um what I can include there.
Okay, and um. Low wage, uh, wages in Pueblo are a lot less than other parts of this state and the country. And uh, one of the reasons is that employers in this town know that they can pay less. And uh, for those people looking for a job, uh, how do we deal with that?
Huh, that's, that's the sixty fourth million dollar question. Um, you know, it's interesting, because. You know, Pueblo is experiencing a lot of the, what I saw in Colorado Springs when I moved here seven and a half years ago. Where the wages were lower, they are still lower. Um. But you know, what is, of course, happened over, over the last, you know, seven and a half years is that. The cost of living has almost doubled here for housing in particular. Uh, and, and the wages have gone up, but there's still that gap. So that same table that I showed you for Pueblo that showed Pueblo wages are twenty two percent lower than the US, twenty six lower. Percent lower than up than um Colorado. Um, you know, our, our gap isn't as big as yours, but it's still there. Uh, wages are very sticky, as economists call it, so. It's, it's a conundrum, right? Because what are you gonna do when your housing costs in particular continue to climb, climb, climb? But you've got wage gaps that are in the double digits. It, it, you know. Something's gonna hit, right? A, a, a wall. You're gonna have individuals, and what I worry about in particular is young talent. Because they're, you know, they're obviously the ones who don't have home equity yet, uh, you know, and, and they get hit the hardest. So I can't say that I have an answer, but I can say to you, like, you know, Dennis and Abel first said to me. You first need to have the data in front of you, and you need to consistently have it, and you need to have it updated. So that at least you know what the, wh- what the baseline is. What are you dealing with here? How bad is the wage gap? Um, you know, and if it's, if I can get the data and it's particularly large for females. That's something that should be talked a lot about, right, in city council, um, in the media, um, you know, to employers. Um, and that's another reason that I think disseminating this is super, super important. And I know I'm thrilled that it's used a lot and disseminated a lot in Colorado Springs.
Okay, thank you very much. Just a thought, fifteen dollar minimum wage for Pueblo.
You know, I don't know how it is in Pueblo, but um. In Colorado Springs, uh, you know, the, the McDonald's down the street has a big banner that says seventeen dollars an hour starting salary.
Counselor Flores.
Um, yeah, Dr. Bailey, uh, the CPI index, uh, you had, you contrasted Pueblo to the national numbers. Is there a way of, of separating or? Digging deeper and contrasting CPI between Pueblo, Colorado Springs, Denver, maybe even Boulder?
Yeah, that's actually easy. Um.
The reason I bring that up is that we lose a lot of our fire people, our police officers, uh, when they think that. The grass is greener, maybe in Denver, and they're gonna get a higher wage. They don't take the CPI into consideration.
Right.
Find out that the home they had here, they can't buy in Denver for what, what, what they did here. And I, that data to me is gonna be really important, uh, because I think. Our CPI in Pueblo is so much lower than Springs and Denver. That we need to be able to show that.
Yeah, that cost of living index that I showed you at eighty, eighty eight point two for Pueblo is now at one oh eight. Point six for Colorado Springs, and it was below a hundred when I moved here, so. Um, you know, that's quickly changing and um. I worry about that a little bit with Pueblo too, with your housing costs, but yes, you're, I mean, definitely, you know, Denver is like, I think, one seventeen or one eighteen, something like that. So it is a big difference.
Other questions? Dr. Bailey, I'm curious of what other ideas you had for the open space in the dashboard. For Springs, you mentioned that's where you have a lot of the military metrics. Um, what other ideas that you have to fill that?
Well, I think some of the things that were brought up, uh, you know, the wage gap, if I can get it by region, um. And then, you know, the unemployment rate by uh racial ethnic group, educational attainment by um racial ethnic group. I think that's actually really good information for you to have, and that may actually use up um most, if not all of that space. Um, so I, I'm in, I'm in agreement with that. And honestly. I think that once this dashboard, you know, these, you know, three, four pieces that are still missing, once it's populated. I mean, I would love for you all to talk about that, uh, you know. I mean, I would love for you all to talk about that, uh, you know. How do you feel this information's gonna be used? Um, and then, you know, I'm happy to listen in on that. And and weigh in as an economist and and what I've seen in other communities. Um, but you know, I think. It 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 really starts to become a little more region specific. So for instance, when, you know. It was brought up about these racial ethnic groups, I think that's really relevant for an area like yours. Um, building permits, you know, if if. There's concern about um urban sprawl, if there's concern about overbuilding, all of those different things. There may be one or two additional metrics um that we may wanna stick in there. So I think a lot of it has to do with. What you feel are the most uh pressing issues. I'll also tell you that. This um, this uh group of metrics that I have for you. I think are some, uh, I really do feel are the the most important ones for you to have, you know, and and to have uh updated on a monthly basis. And it's been honed a little bit even for us over the years. So, you know, and then one of the thing I should mention is there are one or two of these um that I rotate. So for instance, when I showed you US vehicle sales, every once in a while, um, I put Colorado Springs Airport in plainments in there. Because I'm able to get that data as well. And that kind of just gives the community a picture, two or three times a year of what's happening with our local airport. So that's another possibility. Can't do that with too many of these, but there are two or three where you could uh rotate.
And can you clarify, when is this going to go live? This dashboard?
Dr. Bailey answered that.
Yeah, so as soon as I get these last few pieces of data, um, it's gonna, it's gonna be ready to go. Um, you know, so my hope is. In the next two to four weeks, unless I hit a wall with one of these, but I don't think so because um. I've got a plan at least, uh, and conversations happening and, you know, and both Abel and and Dennis have been really helpful in terms of. Well, if this doesn't work, you know, what what else might we do? Um, but I'm pretty confident in the next two to four weeks.
Well, I look forward to talking more about it. Thank you so much, Dr. Bailey, for that presentation.
Oh, okay, there was, there was one last thing. I I just spaced it out and that is, there's another piece. To the services you'll be providing called workforce development. And I I don't wanna get into that at all because that's gonna take a whole other uh work session. Uh, but that that's one thing. That if you look at the graph having to do with the fact that there's five thousand jobs available in Pueblo and they can't be filled. That we have to connect our educational systems, both our university and PCC. To be able to start training people for the jobs that are there to be had. And uh, but I I wa- I just wanted to mention that, that that's something that will be part two of this dashboard and that. It has a lot of potential and uh and changing the way we do things here in Pueblo.
Well, thank you, Dr. Bailey, um, for that presentation. Um, I think it's super exciting for Pueblo and it's a good thing it's gonna be a useful tool. Um, the next on our agenda is a visit Pueblo annual report update. So do we have Ms. Kitzman? And Mr. Nava to the podium.
Chairman Martinez, counselors, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for allowing us a few minutes today just to come and present to you. Today, we're gonna give an update on Visit Pueblo and our destination management. As you know, Visit Pueblo lives uh within the Greater Pueblo Chamber and we serve as the destination management organization for. All things Visit Pueblo for the city. So I'll turn it over to Danielle Kitzman, our Vice President of Tourism.
Thank you. And I would just reference uh in speaking with um Dr. Bailey about the tourism data. Those those data points that we were looking for for that ADR RevPAR information are things that I get from hotels on an individual basis, but. Similar to one of the other data points she has, uh, we don't uh get enough hotels reporting to to jump into some of the. Bigger industry known reports like STAR, they call it a STAR report. Um, so I'm working to get a few individualized reports from some locations that she can use to collect that data. And then on top of that, we do have a call this week to um to see if we are now positioned to be on that that global kind of report. And I think we're getting close. So so we're working on those and and hopefully I'll have some data for her here in the next day or two. So just wanted to start with that. Well. PowerPoint up. Um, at any reference, uh, thank you for allowing us the. The opportunity to talk to you today about Visit Pueblo and what's been happening uh in the last year or so. As you know, tourism is big business in Colorado. Colorado spent twenty four point two billion dollars in uh travel spending, that data point that she referenced. And the Colorado Tourism Office collects this data from multiple sources. Dean Runyon and Longwoods are two big. Well-known reputable firms that collect that data. So that travel spending will get her that information as well, what goes into that that data point. The state also welcomed eighty six point nine million visitors. Uh, the tourism industry supports a hundred and eighty thousand jobs in Colorado. And saved seven hundred and seven dollars annually in taxes and collected one point five billion in state and local taxes paid by visitors into the economy. In Pueblo, uh, the average between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, travel spending was about a hundred and eighty million dollars. Supporting two, a little over two thousand jobs and collecting over six million in local taxes and five million in state taxes. We do have some data that we collect regularly uh in conjunction with the city and gross lodging sales is one of those metrics we look at and how the. Uh, hotel industry is doing as a whole and indicative of what travel is doing and uh. Twenty twenty one ended at forty six million dollars in um gross hotel receipts and that's a phenomenal number that, you know, is record breaking. And if you break that down, the at the average daily rate is around a hundred and thirty dollars in Pueblo, so that equaled out about three hundred and fifty thousand rooms that were booked in Pueblo County. And that netted about one point seven million dollars in twenty twenty one lodging tax collected, also a record high. The Visit Pueblo team provides destination management, so it's made up of a handful of things, but the um top being advocacy for the industry. Destination development, marketing and advertising, events, sales and support, and then visitor services. We are members of a variety of state organizations committed to the industry. So some of the top ones. The Colorado Tourism Office Leadership Committee, uh, I'm fortunate right now to be a co-chair of that committee. And we focus on recruiting and sustaining uh leadership uh development in the tourism industry. Uh, the Tourism Industry Association is a lobbying firm that we monitor legislation and actively participate. In uh efforts to support pro uh industry legislation. One of the uh big ones we helped with last year was the Meeting and Events Incentive Program, which passed legislation allocating uh ten million dollars to help Colorado. Keep and retain and attract um meetings and events here in Colorado. So. Um, that was one of the 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 good ones, the Colorado Hotel and Lodging Association. We are members of that and we share industry updates and standards, COVID relief opportunities. We monitor legislation that um may impact the industry from the state level and. Mid and and transfer that down to the local level. As well as the Colorado Association of Destination Management Organizations. I know that's a mouthful. But uh that organization um is made up of all the CVBs in the state, similar to what Visit Pueblo is. And we meet regularly throughout the year and share uh industry ideas, what's happening in our own communities, um, and it's a. A great helpful organization, as well as looking at internationally, destination management international helps us stay in line with industry standards, trends. Uh, and accessing metrics from across the globe to help us kind of manage what we do. And then on a different level, Care for Colorado and Leave No Trace, uh, we work with those out, um, those organizations to share sustainable tourism messaging. For our outdoor partners in particular, uh, making sure that we are sharing messages in all platforms to to kind of. Travel like a local, be respectful of the place that you're traveling to.
Um, one thing I just want you to hit on, Danielle, if you don't mind, uh, I know you threw out the CBB as just an acronym. If you can explain what that is and what the difference between that and and destination management organizations?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Convention Visitors Bureau is that CBB term. And that's kind of the standard traditional. It's morphed over the last few years or probably, probably five or more into destination management. And that's because we really have a holistic approach in what we're doing and supporting industry partners in servicing events. In uh, you know, bidding uh on events, in uh hotel management, et cetera. So it's. It's a much bigger, broader term now because of all the things that go into really, uh, you know, a healthy tourism industry in our community. Um, so to that point, destination development is a a pretty broad scope and has many components, but at the core. It's um how we work to build the public community into a tourism destination. And we do that through extensive community engagement and partnerships, some of those being listed here. Uh, the Destination Pueblo Advisory Committee is a monthly organization or meets monthly and that's made up of all the different attractions in town. And uh, some of some hotels, some restaurants and they they uh, we meet to just go over industry news, resources, local events, advertising and marketing opportunities. We hold workshops and classes for them from everything from YouTube to TikTok, keeping up on all the the recent trends that they uh need to be abreast and to um advertise. And then we also do event consulting and support for a lot of them. Right now, we have a proposed Pueblo Art Festival we're working with, a Good Night Barn Chuck Wagon Rendezvous, and we just uh helped uh support the Frost by Fish off that brought ninety anglers here to Pueblo. So some of the most recent, the Pueblo Lodging Association, as I referenced, we do bimonthly meetings with them. Connecting our hotel owners and management to that cut, that gro- broader state uh messaging from the Colorado Hotel Lodging Association. Keeping them up to date on industry updates um and resources. And then we also work with them to do large room blocks, like for Rocky Mount Street rods and some of these events that are coming, the Pueblo Bike Classic is um one of those. So we work with them on room blocks. Um, Pueblo Chili Rose Association, of course, uh, we support them with administrative needs, seasonal marketing and event opportunities, and then advocacy too from a legislative. Side, the farm, uh, Farm Workers Rights Bill was a big one last year we worked on, as well as right now, we've put together a committee of local um. Farmers to uh represent uh hicken loopers uh. Opportunity to review the farm bill that's coming in twenty twenty three. It's a kind of a state and and national uh group, so. Getting them involved so that where we have local representation, as well as again to that. Colorado Association of Destination Management Organizations. We really fall back on them a lot to look at in uh statewide trends. What their uh funding is looking like and uh so that's one that we meet with regularly. The SoCo Summit Partnership is uh an opportunity for regional collaboration within eleven southeastern counties. So that's resulted in. Some great resources for trade shows and um industry updates from a region, supporting regional events. And et cetera. And then visitor services, of course, operating the Pueblo Welcome Center and offering visitor services such as uh welcome bags or. Welcome tables. Uh, right now, we've got the Transportation Technology uh Conference here with five hundred. Visitors and at six thirty this morning, our staff was setting up a welcome table and there to answer questions all day long for them um about how to engage in our community. So that's. A regular part of what we do. Along with the destination development is uh something that we were proud of. We were awarded the uh Colorado Restart Destinations Grant by the Office of Economic Development. That allowed us to have um seventy five hours of consulting, uh, work and a ten thousand dollar um grant for marketing. We're still going through that process. We'll be wrapping it up in May. Out of that came some really great uh workshops with our local um. Partners and one of the pieces that came out of it was a little more advocacy and a little more talking about what we do. So in January, we launched the Visit Pueblo newsletter. It's kind of growing and and figuring out what information goes on that. But really, um, going back to that TTC I uh conference, for instance. Um, we found that communicating with our local restaurants and businesses when we have a large scale event. Is something that had, there's a gap. We, most businesses, restaurants are closed on Mondays and Tuesdays, particularly Mondays. So we didn't want five hundred people coming into our town looking for a great place to eat, not being able to do that. So we mobilized and launched, uh, went went out literally manpower, phone calls are and uh collected. Emails and started an e-blast to get that information out to them in a timely manner so they could prepare from a staffing level. Maybe rearrange their hours so they can capitalize on those conferences and events that come here. So that'll be a monthly publication that will be coming out from Visit Pueblo. Moving into marketing and advertising, Visit Pueblo provides um marketing and advertising across multiple platforms. In twenty twenty one, we looked at investing more in paid digital and streaming options. Uh, we use short and long uh form video, some fun interactive short burst videos, uh specializing in. Particular things like biking or fishing, um, things like that, and then static ads throughout uh Google platforms. Uh, that, uh, as you can see, resulted in some pretty good, um, some pretty good metrics, sixteen thousand Google searches and clicks. Uh, six point nine click through rate, which is uh double the the industry standard. Our website is performing up ten percent from twenty twenty for visitation, of course, I'm sure that's part of the COVID trend. But a hundred and forty thousand searches for things to do in Pueblo. Among those top searches were attractions in Pueblo, things to do, outdoor rec and history and culture. And forty three hundred uh video commercials aired in select Colorado markets. We also do a a whole host of print uh publications and um. Yes, kind of a few slides here. Um, some of the the fun ones that we were able to secure, the know by uh the Denver Post feature ditch the mountains this winter and head to southern Colorado. The Travel Waits publication did how to spend a long weekend in historic Pueblo. We had a Colorado Road Trip feature in Salt Lake's uh Salt Lake City Magazine, Royal Gorge Guide did a full page feature, Denver Post as well, Thirst Magazine of. Feature on Pueblo local breweries and then a whole host of regular ads that we. We contract with from Colorado Love, Colorado Fun, Colorado Life, Colorado Springs Official Visitors Guide, Colorado dot com. The Gazette, the Denver Post, and then AAA Magazine also did a great Pueblo feature. Some of the other uh marketing highlights, we were able to work with the Colorado Film Commission uh to include Pueblo in Uncharted Adventures, which aired on. Uh, the Weather Channel and it uh incorporated some fun, like crazy things with weather, which they they did a feature on the PBR Sports Performance Center. So. In twenty twenty one, we were um invited to attend three media receptions hosted by the Colorado Tourism Office in which they position us. With uh at least twenty travel writers, bloggers, uh everyone in the media. Um, for us to pitch stories about Pueblo, which resulted in some great wins like uh the Station, um, the Station Inn on the Riverwalk being included in a New York Post feature. We also nominated Neon Alley and the Riverwalk uh to be featured in the Colorado Tourism Office International Promotion Commercial. So the segments of those. Assets are being aired all across the world. And then the Neon Alley also won twenty twenty one's um best downtown place by Downtown Color- Colorado Inc., which we nominated them for that. So. Couple of great wins there. As far as events, sales and support, um, as I referenced, convention, sales and servicing, we work hand in hand with the convention center regularly. And other venues across the city to attract and sell conferences, events, group tours, tournaments, et cetera. Our team works with hotels to secure room blocks and negotiate uh rates as necessary to book the events. We arrange event support and servicing from digital welcome kits on their websites during registration so they can find out about Pueblo before they come. Welcome bags, welcome tables, um, and shuttle services, group dining options, entertainment like the Riverwalk. Pub crawls, tours and other attractions in our region and even extends to mayoral welcomes um that will book with them and you all in city council. Welcoming some of these events. We belong to numerous organizations that support this marketing activity. Some of those in these, this group, tour bus operators like Tour Colorado and AVA, American Bus Association. Group and leisure travel, we just finished Golf Expo and Go West Summit, um, marketing to. Leisure travelers and also group travel um from all across the country. Um, we did Meetings International, which is another meeting planner conference in Denver just recently. And those are regular, uh, kind of regular opportunities. We also host site visits and familiarization tours. Last Friday, we had a travel writer here doing um some features on Pueblo culinary. Options that we took her around for a half day and toured Pueblo and bunch of restaurants. And then familiarization tours can be from, we've done, we did one last year for Colorado Association of Realtors, bringing a handful of realtors down to look at us for a conference. Space and then Military Reunion Network, we hosted twenty meeting planners that have a particular forte in military related events. Brought them here to Pueblo to show them around for a day. So some of the things we do from a group travel um standpoint. Visitor Services, of course, we've welcomed over 1,500 visitors at the Welcome Center. We made over 7,500 welcome bags, 300 new mover packets, hundreds of emails. Uh we just distributed over 30,000 copies of the Pueblo Visitors Guide throughout the state. Uh we've hosted welcome tables and uh at 14 conferences, and we deliver regularly and maintain all the visitor materials in all of the uh Colorado Welcome Centers across the state and at our local hotels and attractions. And we also uh knew last year, we collaborated with the Colorado Tourism Office and the Colorado State Fair to open the uh Colorado Welcome Center at the State Fair. So we staffed and manned that with volunteers and materials, and we provided over 3,000 um guests with information on Pueblo and Colorado abroad. So uh those are some of the highlights there. And last, Darrell, do I just hit the button and it'll go? Just wanted to end with our latest commercial.
I don't want to entertain any questions you have. Thank you, Chamber. I definitely want to visit Pueblo now. Um what questions or comments are there from Council? Councilwoman Flores?
Uh Danielle, we've had this conversation before, and uh that is the amount of, I mean, our Convention Center now is kind of a perfect spot for small to, I guess it would be small conventions or medium conventions, however the terminology is. But you've said several times to me that we've lost a lot of these conventions because we don't have enough rooms. And uh I think we've talked about uh 120 rooms. Uh yeah, a lot of these we could capture. And uh it obviously, you know, that's part of the economic development arm of the city and all of us working together. But can you elaborate a little bit about the things that the kind of calls you get and the and the people that we we lose or the conventions that we lose because we don't have enough rooms?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I, it is unfortunate. We we've done a great job as a community and as a city, and the word is out about Pueblo. And our Convention Center uh makes us uh a a front-range uh magnet for these events because there's not many facilities. In fact, Colorado Springs doesn't have a Convention Center. And the one competition we did have was the Hotel Elegante, which just recently um is closing. And uh and so that sent a no less than probably 10 immediate needs down to Pueblo of where are we going to host our event that they had already had booked out. Um so we are positioned uh, you know, prime for all of that business. But when it came down to it, we immediately started running on these RFPs for this Hotel Elegante business and uh immediately lost too because we didn't have enough downtown hotel space uh to attract them. We typically will have to spread out throughout the city, and we try to maximize as much as possible in downtown area. But the downtown is is um the place to be, and all the traveler, you know, the travelers want to be downtown and walkability, walk to restaurants, get on the Riverwalk. Um so that also poses a problem with the amount of business travel that we have uh with expansion of EFRES and all of the great developments that are happening in our community. We have a lot of business travel that our downtown hotels are locked into um with great contracts that generate them great revenue and our consistent business, repeat business. So when I call them or the Convention Center calls them and says, hey, we've got this event, we need 175 rooms in the downtown area. It sometimes that's pretty tough, and there's there's less than 400 between the two Marriott's. And they also have formulas in which they can allow how many rooms to be booked within a hotel and how many need to be left open for other markets. So we have to meet those formulas, and you know, we work with them, and they are a crucial part to our success in attracting this business or booking it. Right now, we have a competitive bid in front of us that we just met with uh met with Convention Center, the Marriott's on the last Thursday for uh the USA Boxing uh International Invitational. This would bring 200 uh top-tiered athletes, athletes that just competed at um the Olympics to Pueblo for nearly 10 days, between seven and 10 days. We need 175 downtown hotel rooms, and I can tell you that we aren't making that right now. So we have to then uh work within our budget to place them up at the North End or South End hotels wherever we can fit them. And then we pay for shuttles to bring them back and forth. So that's part of that convention or event servicing, um part of our budget that we use to to hold on to those pieces of business.
I I was um at a, I had taken my grandson to get his haircut, and I was just sitting there reading the Denver Magazine. I think it's called 5280, 5280. I never realized this before, but they actually uh they have a graph of how much, what is the uh the amount of fees that they get from any park in the state of Colorado. And our Pueblo Lake is the highest, it's number one in attracting and providing revenue to the state. I never realized that before, but there obviously uh there's a market there too of people wanting to get on the lake for all the recreational activities there are.
Yeah, absolutely. Outdoor rec is, you know, one of the top um attractors for tourists here in Pueblo. Of course, as we all know, our weather is amazing. So during the off-season, when we have uh fishermen and um hiking and biking fanatics, they're all coming to Pueblo. We may not see them because they're camping, they're, you know, they're and they're staying staying out at the lake or in other areas, but they do have a major impact on our our community and our economy. Um and we're doing everything we can to capitalize on that um that business, again, while promoting sustainable uh, you know, tourism. The Lake Pueblo's uh we're we're almost getting into the over-tourism, and they probably would say we are being uh experiencing over-tourism, which is something I never thought we'd say about Pueblo. And you know, when I started seven years ago, I think it was a little little over 2 million visitors, and now we're looking at over 3 million that are coming to Lake Pueblo State Park. So it's a, it's a balancing act.
Councilor Mastry?
I visited the Welcome Center after the luncheon the other day, and um your hostess that's here today, she did an awesome job. She's very well organized over there. She's very personable, and she's very informative. And that was really nice to see. And by the way, I also have been recruiting volunteers for you since I've visited. One of the things I wanted to ask about, um in the lodging um statistics that came out this year, the percentage of lodging, it was higher than normal. Um one thing people have been asking, um the vouchers that are given to people who are looking for a room that night or some sort of um shelter, are those included in that statistic?
Um what vouchers are you?
Well, you know, if somebody's um the church will give them a voucher. Yes. Are those included in the statistics?
Uh yeah, I wouldn't know. I mean, because with that, with, as far as I'm aware, that tracks revenue, you know. So if if they're getting subsidized from the government somewhere down the road, then it should be included, I would guess. But it wouldn't be in lodging tax because they're they're not probably paying tax. You know, they're not paying that lodging tax portion, that 4.3. So that's a great question. Um that would be a question to follow up with the city um sales tax uh department to see what goes into those figures.
Okay, thank you.
We can get that information for you, um Councilwoman Mastry, and we'll get that emailed off to you.
Thank you, Duane. I appreciate it.
I think that um the hostess over there is Liz Chat- Liz Chapman, just for some public recognition. So Liz, Councilor Tensio.
Yeah, and in terms of hotel rooms, uh when is that hotel on Santa Fe under construction going to be open, do you know?
Yeah, it's supposed to be open here um not too long, I think in May, June um was their timeline, uh hopefully sooner. It is an extended stay, and so their model is a little bit different. Now, if they aren't in high-peak season and have open, you know, an open enough occupancy, then they will um be able, we will utilize it for convention space. So that's the plan right now.
Any news on the hotel on Main Street?
I have none. There any news on the hotel?
Thank you.
Yeah, and I appreciate the comment on the Visitor Center. Liz just took that over um and is doing a great job. And we um we've got what, Liz, I think four or so what uh volunteers now that are new? Oh, 10. And thanks to the uh, we've gotten quite a few for that um that do the uh pro- their tax program where they do community service for that, and we've gotten some that are great that are going to stay. So so we're we're thank you for your recruiting.
Okay, I think Councilor Winner.
Yeah, uh this is kind of off-subject, but uh speaking of the Visitor Center, I heard you had a theft there earlier this year. And some laptops were stolen and televisions.
We had a TV that was missing, um and that's being investigated and turned over to our police department.
Oh, okay, okay. Nobody was hurt or?
No.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Before we, I just want to take a minute to, you know, publicly acknowledge uh the staff at the Chamber, especially the Visit Pueblo staff. Um it it takes the entire staff at the Chamber to pitch in, to pull this off. I mean, not not, it's not just the four people that work within that that CBB Bureau um within the Chamber, but um Danielle's done an amazing job leading that team. Um and and it's showing in the work that in the return that we're getting back um on the on the tourism side. So um thank you for all of your continued support of the Chamber.
Awesome. Thanks, Danielle. Thanks, Duane, and thank you for the um folks here from Visit Pueblo. If there's nothing else for the good of the order, I will adjourn this work session at 6:51.